Everyone, to Spokane City Council Study Session for today. We are going to have our annual legislative interaction with our state legislators and other local leaders. And then we're going to spend a little bit of time discussing the 2022 budget and potentially some of our process as well. But without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Mum, who is the Chair of our Legislative Work Group. Councilmember Mum, take it away.
Good morning, everyone. We have set aside an hour. It may not take an hour, but what we'd like to do is start off to hear from you, our elected representatives in the legislature first. And then after that, we'd like to present our Spokane legislative priorities for 2022, City of Spokane. We also have invited the City of the Valley and Cheney to join us as well. And they have set us their legislative priorities, and we love working with our neighboring cities. So we'll have time to hear from the City of the Valley and the City of Cheney as well. And then if we have a little leftover time, we can chat about anything else that we need to. So thank you so much for being here this morning, and we wish we could all see you in person. Let's really hope we get to do that in 2022. But I would like to begin with our Senator, Andy Billig, first, to tell us about his upcoming priorities for 2022. I'm thinking about five minutes or so, and please take it away, Senator.
Great. Thank you very much. Good morning, everyone. Great to be with you. I think maybe the first thing I'll do is just briefly touch on the session logistics, just because I know we've been getting a lot of questions about that. So last year, we were really proud of the fact that we were one of the only legislatures in the entire country that didn't have a case of COVID in our legislature among public staff or members. So we're looking to repeat that again if we can. We are going to be more in-person than we have in the past. In the Senate, at least, we'll be all members on the floor when we're voting during floor sessions, and then our committees will be remote, which was really actually quite successful last year, especially for all of our joint constituents to have an easier time, and for all of you to testify without having to travel over to Olympia. And then meetings may be in-person. It'll be sort of up to each individual senator how to do individual meetings, but the Senate will allow a small number of people to meet in-person. So that's kind of how we're going to look logistically. I think in terms of policy priorities, you know, we're the sort of overarching policy priority is going to be continuing to help our state and our community in Spokane to recover both economically and from a health perspective, and to come through the pandemic as strong as possible, and with the strength that helps everyone in our community, and to look particularly for pockets of our state that may need extra help. Some more specific things I think you could look for is transportation will certainly be a priority. We are continuing to work on a transportation package, whether we get it done or not, it still remains to be seen, but then it will certainly be a priority to try to get that done. We also are going to have, we've passed some really big policy the last few years, and so this session, we're going to have some follow-ups, I think, to tweak a number of the big policies that we pass, which is something that often happens when a big policy passes. But I don't think you're going to see a lot of new big policy, other than maybe transportation, partly because it's a short session, but also partly because we've done a lot recently, and we do need to have some time to let the agencies catch up with the rulemaking, to let communities and municipalities catch up, citizens catch up. And so I think you will see a little bit of a slower session in terms of major policy pieces. And then I just wanted to touch on two pieces that may be of interest that I've been working on. One is a bill, and I want to thank Councilmember Welferson for her leadership in this area to help us spur housing along I-90, particularly near the I-90 intersection. And there is some land that the State Department of Transportation purchased that they now perhaps don't need, and trying to take that surplus land and return it to its prior use, which was housing. And there may need to be a bill to allow laws not to do that in a way that can be productive and efficient to potentially do that at less than market rate. And there is concern, you know, that the idea of doing it at market rate, any surplus lands to sell or lease at market rate is a good overall policy because it protects all of us taxpayers from making sure the state doesn't give away land, and it should. But what we're looking at here is really a community that was hit hard by these purchases and demolitions of these houses, and we know we have a real need for housing. And so the idea would be this would be a very limited scope, and that the department could only use this power if they were going to return land to the use, to the prior use of the land. So this prior was used as housing, it could be returned to housing. We think that will smooth things over and make it more palatable for everybody and still achieve the goal of helping that community successful and to add more housing to our community. The second bill that I've worked on, which also is related to housing, goes specifically to trying to convert downtown circus parking lots to housing or mixed use. And so we have a draft of a bill. I believe Senator Trudeau, who's our new senator from Tacoma, may end up being the prime sponsor of that bill, but that would be another one that I think would be of a lot of interest and really productive for Spokane. And I've talked to many of you about that and appreciate your input. So I think I'll leave it there, just to say, as a final thought, that I appreciate the partnership with the city. I think communication has been excellent. You certainly have good lobbyists in Olympia, but I also like hearing directly from the council members. I think every council member on this call has had the chance to have some interactions with in the not-too-distant past to get input, share ideas, and I just want to encourage us to continue with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Really appreciate that. I'll now turn to Representative Armesby.
Thanks, Councilmember Mum, and thank you for convening and providing us with your study session. A couple of things, really just reiterating Andy's point about, there's a lot of uncertainty about how we're going to conduct business this year in the House. Marcus has much better insight on that, and I'll leave that to him to explain. The focus for me this year, I think, is, you know, as Andy said, we have to let the, for lack of a better phrase, let the dust settle a little bit on unprecedented investments that have been made and see how the implementation of those goes that would inform tweaks. And in that sense, a traditional supplemental budget, which is this year, the second year of the biennium, is reserved for those kinds of tweaks to policy, whether it's in the police reform area, whether it's in growth management, and any of the areas that the experience and implementation has informed us about things that need to be done, that I think are widely agreed to, that we need to move forward. And finish up, that tweaking is going to be in a short amount of time, 60 days, doesn't lend itself to being able to get through big ideas that have not been thoroughly vetted. My focus will continue to be like in the child welfare space for foster kids. I think that is going to be the focus of the Department of Children, Youth, and Families, as I think we have done everything that we know we can do, and this is not to say the problems are resolved, in the early learning and childcare arena. Huge unknowns about the economy and the workforce needs in the child, early learning and childcare space. We don't know how the economy is going, you know, what are going to be the pressures on parents, on workforce needs, et cetera. And speaking of workforce, I think that is going to be the primary focus, is addressing the evolution of the workplace and the workforce, and where we see shortages. And does it have to do with education? Does it have to do with compensation? Does it, you know, how is the remote and in-person economy going to evolve, and how are we going to react to it? The legislature is not great at predicting those things as anybody else is, because basically, we're six, nine, 12 months behind the reality and implementation that we would do in legislative session. It's not going to manifest itself into the real world, you know, for at least six months, and maybe 18, 24 months later. That's a little bit of the danger on the workforce side. We know we have economic and education pressures that we're going to have to deal with. For the relationship between our political subdivisions, whether they're school districts or sewer and water, hospital districts, cities and counties, is going to be defining roles and responsibilities between what is the state going to take responsibility for, and what are the local governments, school districts, the other political subdivisions? What is their commitment? How are we going to partner? So it's a true partnership. I will stipulate at the outset, we have an abundance of one-time resources. So we have one-time money that lends itself to one-time expenditures. Andy mentioned transportation, I think, on the capital side. We also have some needs there that are along those lines of one-time in nature. And I think the theme of budget that I really would like to focus on for myself is housing, housing, housing. Everything from preventing folks from getting into compromising positions upstream, preventative measures, all the way through to whether it's mortgage assistance, or, you know, folks that have a mortgage and are, you know, needing a little bit of relief, and everything in between. So it's a very wide range, and I think it's very tempting to focus on one component, but they all work together. And I have great concerns about what the city being in a position to be able to access one-time resources in the housing area, just depending on what the rules, you know, how that money is going to be driven out. And we weren't very successful in the rapid acquisition stuff that happened recently, and I'm just hoping that the coordination and cooperation within the city lends itself to getting resources that are going to happen, that are going to actually benefit our mutual constituents in this. And, you know, Spokane is ground zero here, and the county and the eastern Washington region for being a bellwether for how we do things, and we have the ability to stand out and to lead in this area, and I hope we continue doing that.
Excellent. Great information. I'll now go to Representative Graham.
Um, can you hear me? You can? Okay. Yeah, because I don't see where they're... Oh, here it is. Okay. First of all, I'm really grateful to be able to be here today and hear, you know, be part of this work group and be able to hear, you know, my other legislators' priorities, and then also to be able to hear from the city council, you know, things that you have on your mind. That's one of the things that's a priority for me, is I would love to be more connected with the city council when it comes to a lot of the issues that we are working on together that affect, you know, our region. And, you know, housing is something that is really exciting. I had the opportunity to go out to Highlands Village in Airway Heights, and there is a program that, you know, we were part of helping get off the ground. So I had the chance to go out and see the new housing project that they put together that is Fairchild Air Force Base has, it's a flight path where there are people that live there, and they've been trying to find a safe place to move them to. So that's where this housing is coming from, is it's creating another place for them to go that they can afford, that's safe for them to be. And the other thing that's exciting about this is there's cottages that they are also putting there that are three, four bedrooms, and they can be leased, leased to own, where you now are taking people that normally, maybe they might not have had a chance at homeownership, and you're providing different options for them, you know, and the lease to own could be that when the house is sold, then the money is split, and they have the opportunity now to put that down on a house for them to buy. And the other thing that was super exciting is they were building regular housing around this, too. So we were talking about that, that now we don't have a situation where we have low income over here in this side of our city or county. It's, they're more dispersed, and it was just absolutely a beautiful housing development. I'm so excited for, I'm going to be checking on this to see what this looks like going forward, to see, you know, how we can continue to support this. Other priorities for me, you know, I'm going to mirror, you know, what, you know, my peers are saying as far as we want a safe working environment. So there's a little bit of a question as far as what that looks like. I know personally for me, I'm supporting the testing for everybody, and that is putting everybody's health first, and also if somebody does turn up positive, you have the opportunity to get early treatment. So that's absolutely where my heart is on that particular issue. And public safety, I'm on the Public Safety Committee, also in Assistant Ranking on Civil Rights and Judiciary, so I'm sure that we're probably going to be pretty busy coming up here. So I'm looking forward to that, too. I've had some good conversations with other colleagues, and so as far as that goes right now, it's, there's a lot that's going on, and we're going to do our very best to deal with it every day as it comes.
Wonderful. Thank you. Representative Ruchelli.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for having us today. I look forward to hearing what's on top of your mind. I'll be brief, kind of follow a little bit of the past Andy Dale and Tim alluded to. Just for your background, House operations will be a little different than the Senate, partially because our, one of our main buildings that houses a lot of our legislators and staff is smaller in size, et cetera. So we will not be, the House buildings and the offices will not be open to the public. We'll be evaluating that at every step. I think at this point, to on the floor, though, because of 98 members, the Chief Clerk's Office is looking at how they can operate, but there'll be some sort of reduced amount of numbers on the floor, and a hybrid-type effort, and committees will be all virtual. Again, as Andy talked about, we've seen public participation skyrocket, but it also leads to that other question about how we get broadband to every corner of our state, including here in some of our more low-income areas where people don't have access, so they can participate as well. But we've seen public participation skyrocket, which is good. It's mentioned, the transportation piece, I'm certainly interested in that. I'm one of the four Democratic negotiators as we're looking at a potential package. I do think it looks like the perspective for gas prices, while they've been high, are starting to come down, and hopefully they will get back to normal levels. But we want a transportation package that works for everybody. We also want to make sure there's good local investments here. I've been pretty loud about, you know, there's an opportunity to potentially accelerate the completion of the North Spokane Corridor and save money. I'd like to look at that. I'm certainly interested in what we're doing to add access around our east-central neighborhood. I'm very interested in SDA efforts around division bus rapid transit. So I look forward to working with you on all those things and hearing your support. For me, also, I'd like to mention, as a member of the Capital Budget Committee, we've worked very well with you all. You've brought priorities to us. We funded things from community centers to senior centers to other important city capital projects. Just a reminder, this is a supplemental year, so we have about $82 million in our capital budget versus in our budget years, which we just passed around a $6 billion budget. So just managing expectations there, interested in what things are on the table to look at, but just knowing that, you know, that's kind of what we're working with at this point. For me, you know, I'm glad you're not bringing something as controversial and tough as 1155, the emergency communications facility, so thank you for that. I think Representative Graham and Representative Armesby can say that was one of the times where we had a heated debate, but we also, the whole rest of the House is watching us have a 30-minute Spokane discussion on the House floor and the committee process, so that's been, that was interesting, but pleased to work with you on that, get that to the finish line. Personally, I am very frustrated. If you look at the dollars that went out across the state on the rapid rehousing dollars in those two, that we weren't able to pull something together, you know, I tried to engage on that. I'd like to partner, there's the potential that that funding could be expanded. We need to put our community in a position to take advantage of state dollars to make sure that we're addressing housing, and that's a nonpartisan issue, that's a community issue, and we have to do a better job. We should all put the mirror up to ourselves as leaders and say, like, where are we coming up short? Because that, to me, was a real disappointment. Sorry to rain on the parade a little bit, but that every corner of the state, places that are comparable, like Tacoma, Vancouver, all access these dollars, and we were unable to do that. So that's something I'd like to work with you all on. Personally, the film tax incentive, I'll be working on that. It's really important to our community. That has previously been on your legislative agenda. I hope you'll support that and what it does for our economy here. We'll be working to try and expand that incentive so we can compete with places like Montana that are starting to take that business away, and make sure we have a playing field where our folks can get jobs here. Lots of stuff on healthcare access I'll continue work on. My number one priority, though, which I hope I can get your support of, is to feed kids through Build Back Better. There's a program called Community Eligibility Program. I don't know who it is. Matt? How you doing, Matt? Good to hear from you. Okay, good. The Community Eligibility Program, which will, the multiplier through Build Back Better is huge, and with some significant state investment, we can put another $350,000 to $500,000 of our students, including a lot of those right here in Spokane, take the payment for breakfast and lunch off the table and feed kids, and I'm really excited about that. It's aggressive for a supplemental session, but I'd like to work with you all, because I don't think we can have kids thrive if they don't have food in their belly around the other important things. So that's my number one priority. Appreciate everything you all do. Candace, appreciate your leadership as you're leaving the council. You've been great to work with, connecting particularly on Olympia issues, that make sure we get our priorities, and also great with Association of Washington Cities. I guess I should say finally, too, you all came a little bit late with an interesting transportation proposal on speed limits and red light cameras around parks. I'm happy to work with you and other legislators to see if we can do something. I did hear from the Cannon, Cliff Cannon neighborhood, they're really concerned working with the hospitals that, about some streets around there, and I was talking with Eric Poulsen and Luke Etzer last night to see, maybe we could adjust that proposal to also include a pilot around hospital zones, so they could maybe look at that there. So thank you very much.
Great, thank you. And that's a great segue into our list of legislative priorities. I want to thank everyone else who's joined, and I think some others will. We did the round robin for our legislators who are here, and now we're going to look at the City of Spokane priorities, and then we will get to the City of Cheney and City of the Valley priorities after that. So we are going to show you the City of Spokane priorities, and we're going to start with, go up a little higher if you can. Do we have the transportation funding? Actually, getting smart justice. Start with smart. So smart justice has been an area that the Spokane community has been a leader in, winning, you know, big grants and doing reform and working hand-in-hand with our legislators to really do the right thing when it comes to taking care of people and the services that they need, instead of just locking them up in a jail cell and not really helping them. And so this specific request, I'm going to turn back over to Council President, because he sits on the SRJLC and has been a leader in this area. Council President Beigs.
Yeah, thank you so much, Councilmember Mum. So this has been on our agenda for about three years, and, you know, two lines on a PowerPoint don't really do it justice, but just for people who are concerned about this and just turning to this, this isn't really new programming. This is a funding mechanism for local jurisdictions from the state revenue sharing. Right now, one of our most successful interventions locally is drug court and other therapeutic courts, and the reoffense rate for people who graduate through drug court is well under 20%. The reoffense rate for people who go to prison is well over 60%. So it really saves money and it works, but every time we keep someone in drug court locally, after they've, you know, pled guilty to the charge, they've taken accountability, they're under the supervision of a judge, we have to pay for that locally, and the state gets the benefit of not incarcerating them for a year. So the core of this idea is that when we keep someone local, after they've pled guilty and under supervision of a judge and treatment and all those things, the state would share with us half the cost of imprisoning them for a year in their system. So the state saves money right off the bat. We get the money to do the programming. The program works. An elected judge supervises. There's a far more detailed document for anyone that wants it. And we've made some good progress talking with the House Committee Leader on this. Representative Armesby has really assisted us, and our other legislators have been supportive, but it's just taking some time to do it. This is our third year we've been advocating for it, and we're hopeful that we'll continue to make progress on it, probably as a pilot project in probably maybe Spokane, Pierce, and Wacom, which are all interested in these kinds of accelerated reforms.
Any questions from our lawmakers on this or comments? Go ahead and jump in. I can't see everybody.
Sorry. Thanks, Councilmember Mum and Council President Beigs. I think you really landed on it. landed on something when you talk about Pearson and Wacom, because we need critical mass in the legislature, so that is good. I think anybody else, through your various associations with your peers, that identify that, weigh in on that, just that's one more kind of path-clearing mechanism that gets more widely known among members, that then, you know, as opposed to ignoring it because they had heard from anybody locally. So, that is, and you probably mentioned that in the past, but I, in my mind, I've thought of this as a Spokane issue, and you may have already always had these partners, but this is the first time it's landed on me about the cooperation they're doing. I really encourage those communities to weigh in with their legislators, many of whom are very influential, and to broaden that a little bit, because I think it's a great idea. The one, just caveat, is we generally think of resources agnostically, not that we have savings from this thing and they should be dedicated to this thing. We just generally think of the Commonwealth together, and then we prioritize our expenditures. So, if you are willing to be a little flexible in how we determine a formula to fund this, I think it's a very novel idea. I'm just not sure we know how to think about it when we set up some hard and fast rules that we generally try and apply in a fair, firm, and consistent fashion.
Great, great feedback. Thank you.
Representative Graham. You're still on, you're still on mute.
Sorry about that. It disappeared on me. So, this is an issue that I'm definitely passionate about, and I'm, you know, looking forward to being involved with. You know, I'm very active in the community, and a lot of what it is that I'm hearing from my constituents and people that even are not my constituents, is that there's a lot of people that support, you know, what you're talking about as far as the drug courts, that we've seen, you know, we've gone in the right direction for some of the people in, you know, using that tool that's there. I want to caution, though, that we don't set aside crime victims or their families when it comes to the persistent offenders. There's a lot of empathy for, I think, you know, individuals that get caught up in something, they make a mistake, they take responsibility, and they do their part to change what's happening in their life. But there is a growing frustration that I hear almost daily from the, from the people in my community that are really getting very frustrated with the persistent offenders that are a part of the number one. You talk to law enforcement, they say that there is a specific number of people that continually keep, you know, victimizing more and more people. So, I think that, you know, moving forward with this, we need to have some balance. We need to provide opportunities, but there must be accountability for the ones that refuse to change. They can't be allowed to continue to keep making more victims.
Yeah. Thank you, Representative Graham. That's great feedback, and just, and I'll share the more detailed specifics with you offline, but one of the things on this is that the person actually pleads guilty, which means that if they don't comply with the program, they do go straight to prison. And they don't have a right to this program. It's only if a judge deems them ready to make those changes and the judges supervise it, because we hear exactly the same thing that you do. Our hope with this is that we'll expand the capacity to meet the people who are ready to change and take accountability from where it is now in a way that helps the, helps the state as well, and I'm taking to heart Representative Ormsby's thing about how you all think about it, and we'll definitely incorporate that in. We were just thinking of just pure economics of making it clear that it was not just revenue neutral, but revenue positive for you, but we can adjust our proposal to your thinking. So, thank you.
If I may, sorry to interrupt, Councilmember Mum.
Yeah, go ahead, Representative Ormsby.
This may very well fall into the conversation involving municipal district and Superior Courts, the Office of Administrative Courts, and blank fixes. And to the extent that is an issue, if there is a way to follow in the wake of the focus on that for this, just spitballing here a little bit, you're very creative, if there is a way to hitch this to that wagon, that would, I think, that may very well lend itself to initial success in an ongoing fashion. We'll end up having to sort that out ongoing, but to get foothold, it may very well be part of a larger conversation.
This is so important. Thank you for taking the extra time on this. I am going to quickly have summaries through the rest of them, so we can make sure to get the other cities in. So, the next one is traffic safety. I'm going to ask Councilmember Kinnear to just briefly touch on this. Councilmember Kinnear, are you able to weigh in?
Sorry. I need to ask.
This is on the parks, near the parks, this expanding the automated traffic safety cameras.
Yeah, and right now, what we're doing is debating, because we have had a pilot around our parks for the last two years, reducing speeds to 20, and the neighborhoods are very fond of this. Folks outside of our city are not so much, because they have to come through the city to get onto I-90. I would love to see, and whoever suggested expanding it to hospitals, absolutely. So, I would love to see this go forward, and our neighborhoods would be, I believe, supportive of this.
Thank you. Our next item is housing, and it's sort of a grouping of things. So, I would probably go to Councilmember Wilkerson, who's been working on the DOT vacant properties, and if you want to touch the other ones, or possibly Councilmember Stratton, if you want to weigh in as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Mum. So, yes, I think Representative Ormsby said it best, housing, 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 and then more housing. So, I appreciate what Senator Billick said. Our biggest brown bill for housing is along the I-90 corridor, where, when the north-south freeway was proposed, that was 520 homes that were removed that was never replaced in our housing stock, which has certainly lent itself to our unhoused and homeless issues in the city. So, we have talked about land banking. We have certainly used the 1590 tax that was council-matic to stand up some direct funding for that. So, we just look forward to leveraging that money for housing. And to Representative Ruchelli, that whole wraparound, rapid funding for housing was frustrating for us as a city also. I think we just need to work on our partnerships before these opportunities come up. That was our biggest challenge. Thank you, Councilmember Mum.
Councilmember Stratton?
Yeah, I was just going to say, and I think other councilmembers have heard about this, but I just was in a meeting this morning with Community Frameworks and the whole concept of limited equity housing, and I think that's a, that's a project or a process that we're going to be hearing more about, and I think it's worth pursuing, probably not this year, but I think it's something that council needs to kind of dig into and see what we can do to move that along as another option for affordable housing with some buy-in, some actual buy-in from those that need it. So, that'll come up somewhere. I just don't think it fits into this right now.
You're on mute, Councilmember. Also, I have a question. I don't use WebEx. I don't very much, so I don't know where the raise hand function is.
Go ahead, Representative Ruchelli.
Yeah, I guess your question, are you working, because, you know, we have, like, VOAs come to us for funding for the new crosswalk, for Hope House, and now, you know, in talking with them, there's potentially a million-dollar operating shortfall next year. So, when we're talking about housing, too, like, I'm hoping this is all on your agenda and there's policy solutions as we make state investments into really important transitional housing and shelter housing, that the operating side is, you know, looked up. And then, just the Councilmember Wilkerson, I really appreciate what you said about being prepared. I guess my pushback would be Vancouver, Tacoma, Seattle, all got the same notice for these rapid rehousing dollars, and they all have projects. So, you know, I'm hearing that it might be expanded, so I'm looking forward to how we can use the time right now to capitalize on any potential opportunities there. So, but I guess I did want to flag that we've had multiple requests for capital projects, particularly with transitional and shelter housing, and now we're hearing that there might not be funding for operating to go forward, and they're going to actually have to close some of those beds down, and these, you know, Hope House is a very nice new facility.
And if I can say, Councilmember Stratton, as far as that idea, I think it fits well within the spectrum idea, even though it may not be called out on the city's agenda, and being nimble about seeing opportunities. And I think if I understand a little bit more about the concept that you heard from Community Frameworks, to keep that in mind, maybe just offline, just get connected to understand a little bit better about where it fits within the entire spectrum of stability and affordability.
Thank you.
Thanks.
On the trans, is there anyone else that was going to speak? I'm just going to make sure I got everybody. There we go. Okay, transportation funding, it's general. We need it. The one-time funding, Representative Ormsby, that you discussed, it's a great place to put this. Capital budget, real quick, I'm going to do a hit list, and then we're going to go to City of the Valley, because Councilmember Haley has been able to join us. Standalone municipal court diversion bed facility that supports smart justice, refurbish and modernize the former Hilliard Library for a dual-purpose community center, secure funding for the Carl Maxi Center transformation, improve playground equipment in northeast Spokane, establish an intake referral center to help people with homelessness, and install suicide prevention barriers on Spokane's Monroe Street Bridge. We need some help with that as well. And I will make a note, we love to hear from your offices what the member requests are. Sometimes we don't know about those until the very end, and if your staff can communicate with our staff to let us know, sometimes we can leverage those funds or work with you to let you know what we have. And I go to Councilmember Cass Cart.
Yeah, thank you. Just a couple of things real quick. So, in terms of transportation funding, I'm just hoping that there's perhaps a push to use some of the infrastructure dollars that have been allocated to Washington State specifically for speeding up the NSC. I know we're getting $4 to $5 billion as a result of that legislation from Congress, and so, anything we can do to put that into the NSC to speed it up, I think that would be the absolute quickest way. Obviously, there's a little bit of a question as to what a package, if a package comes together and what that looks like this year, but I think with those dollars being available and the fact that, you know, no raise grants from the federal government were even allocated to eastern Washington at all this year, I think just behooves us to put as much of those infrastructure dollars into eastern Washington, and obviously Spokane specifically is really important with the NSC. And there's some other projects that certainly would, I think, should elevate to, for consideration, such as the Wellesley, I think, project within the NEPDA. But, so that's one. And then, two, I just really, really want to emphasize the two capital requests that are in there. One, for the Hilliard Library. I think the behavioral health work that's going to go on there, that MultiCare is going to help stand up, is going to be amazing for the community, and so, we're just going to need some support to help get that building to where it needs to be in order to help support that. And then, supporting anything we can do on the park side. Northeast Spokane does not have any major parks, and trying to stand up a major regional park that can kind of be something that you could almost compare to like a Manitow, to me, is really, really important. And investing in Minnehaha makes the most sense. It's a really easy way to, I think, accomplish something really big for a community very deserving, and so, anything we can do to help stand up and support capital dollars for Minnehaha would also be very appreciated. So, just want to leave that out there.
Right. We're now going to go to the City of the Valley and their priorities, and I turn it over to Councilmember Haley. And Jacoby, if you can put up the list. Councilmember Haley.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Mum. So, this has been on our list for a very long time. We are requesting the 19.3 million to construct the Pines Road grade separation project. So, there's been a lot of growth in Spokane Valley, and it no longer is just 60 trains that travel. It's backups that go on for a very long time. I spoke with one lady who said it took her an hour to cross Pines. So, we're bisected by the railroad, the City of Spokane Valley is. So, what that means is emergency vehicles can't get across, people can't get across, police can't get across. There's just, it really, really needs to be finished. And then, the other issue there, of course, is that there's 230 acres of undeveloped mixed-use commercial and industrial land. Some of that can be used for housing, which we desperately need, affordable housing, and some of it can be used for bringing some economic gains to the city and the citizens. So, when we bid, and we have to take the lowest responsive bid, sometimes that doesn't allow us to make the comment that maybe that particular builder is not appropriate for what we're doing. And so, we would hope that there might be some other bidding criteria that could be used to exclude those who are not capable of doing the job. We've had a couple of pretty big builds that have some pretty big mistakes in them, and so, that would have probably been avoided if we'd been able to go off of any of the other criteria that we'd like. So, Spokane Valley, you guys know it's fairly conservative, so we would like to defend local control. So, we know what the City of Spokane Valley wants and needs, and it isn't what Seattle wants and needs, and in some cases, it's not even what Spokane does, although we're much more alike than Seattle in us. So, we would like to, if at all possible, defend our local control so that we can make the best decisions for the citizens that live in our area. Also, protect and restore local state shared revenues. The funds include the liquor excise tax account, liquor board profits, municipal criminal justice assistance account, marijuana revenues. We've received very little money from marijuana revenues that have been very large part of what goes into the state of Washington. So, we would like more of that shared revenue, only just to help with programs for people who have drug addiction or alcohol addiction or something like that, but we would like to see some of that funding come back to us to take care of some of those things. I know that especially the legislators who are here right now are working on the public safety clarification of the laws. I think there's a lot of misunderstanding, and there were a lot of unintended consequences that were directly related to that misunderstanding. And so, I am hoping that we are able to do that clarification, which all things look like they're going to. And then, also amending the Growth Management Act. We're in a situation in the Valley where we are, we don't have a lot of property in the Growth Management Act. The county has most of it, as the county was able to draw the boundaries. So, we would certainly like to see some changes to the Growth Management Act, and we would certainly support any proposal that owners local democracy and enhances our role as a city in planning. And then, I'm going to put a little tiny plug in, because I know who's on this webinar, is for childcare centers. You guys have been really helpful with everything that has to do childcare. You guys know I own a childcare in downtown Spokane and one up north. We serve high-poverty kids, and any help that you send us is greatly appreciated, and I'd like to thank you for the help you've already given us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any feedback from Councilmember Haley from our legislators? Okay, well, I'd like to introduce Mayor Grover from Cheney.
Good morning, everyone. Sorry for my tardiness for this meeting. I wasn't able to hear from our legislators, so I'm just going to jump right into... our legislators. So, um, I'm just gonna jump right into the City of Cheney's legislative priorities. And I'm immediately just gonna say that we're gonna be seeking about fifteen million dollars to complete our Purple Pipe Pro, project. It's a water reclamation project. We do appreciate, deeply appreciate, the state's help in appropriating a little over eleven million for this project. Uh, the additional funding that we'll be seeking will allow the city to complete this project in 2024. And like, uh, both Spokane and Spokane Valley had mentioned, we do, uh, we are gonna advocate to ensure basic infrastru, infrastructure funding, and I won't go into a lot of the details. Uh, zoning mandates, we're gonna actively defend against preemption of, uh, local land use authority. But we do support policies that help cities provide more equitable access to housing in our cities. Um, as, um, Pam had mentioned, the Growth Management Act, excuse me, we're gonna continue engagement in the GMA reform conversation. Um, and we do advocate for passing a transportation package, and that's already been spoken of, uh, and also law enforcement use of force clarification. Uh, so I won't go into details there. I do, however, wanna go into a little bit of detail on, we wanna maintain the project visibility of the nine oh four, state route nine oh four widening between Cheney and Four Lakes. Excuse me. Um, we appreciate that this, the passing lane project is on the horizon twenty forty long-term, uh, regionals, regionally significant projects plan. However, that doesn't, that's not expected to begin until twenty forty for, for SR nine oh, nine oh four between Cheney and Four Lakes. This section of nine oh four has an antiquated design and is terribly unsafe. Yet, it is the main route to Eastern Washington University and the Cheney School District, as well as a connector to other West Plains cities. Currently, we're at nineteen to twenty thousand vehicles per day traveling on this two-lane, no-passing highway. City's rapidly growing. Eastern's master and plant, master plan calls for continued growth of stu, growth of students in Cheney. Um, so we wanna continue to work with legislators to determine options for addressing critical safety needs here on nine oh four, uh, to hopefully have this project move up, uh, so we can address that a little bit earlier. And a couple other things, um, we are actively going to, um, advocate for rural broadband. Uh, the City of Cheney, along with other rural communities, we're, we're in need for immediate, immediate, we have immediate need for reliable, fast and affordable internet access. Not, you know, we've got a university in our backyard in the city, uh, but it also will help with, uh, economic growth in the city as well. And finally, we do support Eastern Washington University's priorities and goals for capital projects and enrollment growth to maintain a vibrant presence in Cheney and serving the educational needs of our region, uh, particularly the renovation money that, uh, the science, the old science building renovation money that I think Eastern will be asking for as well.
Thank you, Mayor, Representative Graham.
And that's why I want, thank you very much for allowing me to speak. I appreciate it.
Glad you could make it. Representative Graham, did you have something?
That was from previous times. All right. Uh, we had invited, um, Airway Heights, and I do see we have a couple callers. Is there someone here from Airway Heights? Well, I know they're working on water issues. I thought I would also mention, uh, the AWC legislative priorities, our executive meeting is tomorrow. Uh, besides some of the infrastructure items that we've already discussed, there is something that is of interest, and that is protecting the Transportation Benefit District Funding Authority. Uh, that is one tool that we have, and, uh, it's very popular and very helpful for special projects, including, um, our local streets and then also improving sidewalks as well, because we never seem to have enough money for those projects. AWC will come out with a final list for everyone to, um, join in on, and it's a little more statewide in nature. Uh, and we often do advocate for those as well. So, we have come to the end of our hour. Are there any final comments or anything that, uh, you wanted to weigh in on while we just have a few minutes left? Just raise your hand. All right. Well, we like it when we finish on time. And we are so thankful for all the work that you do year-round in our community. And we know you get real busy during the session, but we do like coming to see you in person or virtually. And we also want to give you the feedback that Eastern Washington, and specifically the City of Spokane, really thanks you for being able to communicate virtually. I think this allowed us to have much better communication, not just with you, but with other lawmakers throughout the year. And it felt like we were included more and we didn't have to take, you know, nine hours to come over and talk for two minutes. So, I really hope you can keep that. I think it's, uh, better government and a hybrid model and just really applaud that. And I think it's really better for, uh, Spokane, um, this silver lining to, to the pandemic. We just wanna give you that feedback. So, thanks so much for, uh, all coming today. And, uh, I will now turn it back to Council President Banks, because we have a budget to pass.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Mum. Um, we're leading us today and for all your work, um, you've been on the council almost six years now. We've, I've been on the legislative committee with you that you've led, and you've just done a fabulous job. And, uh, it's just, the results have been better, the communication's been better. And I'm super excited that we have been able for the last couple of years to include our city partners, uh, from around the county so that we're a unified front, uh, going to the legislature. So, thank you. Um, we have, uh, two items financial. One is, uh, our continued discussions about the American Recovery Plan Act funding. Uh, we have that for, uh, ten minutes and then budget, uh, continuing for about twenty minutes. Um, we have a hard stop at twelve thirty, so we'll be done by then. And I'll start with the, um, ARP funding. So, you might remember a few weeks ago, uh, we discussed and gave, uh, tentative thoughts about a package of early outs, uh, that had a lot to do with, uh, housing, childcare, um, and, uh, parks and small business support. And where we are in that process is we, we haven't really had a chance to meet with the administration since then, but the next, uh, step on that is to come up with an RFP process for each of those things that will include a committee of administration council and community members. And so, we're meeting with the administration tomorrow to try to, uh, get that fast-forwarded. Uh, but we now have another tranche of proposals, um, to discuss with you. And before I get to them, I'll tell you that the, the next tranche of proposals after the first of the year is going to be specific council member requests. So, we have thirty or so of those. We won't do them all on the same day, but we're working on one-pagers for those. Uh, so, um, ear, early in the year, we'll start doing that. And then the administration, a couple of weeks ago, a few weeks ago, uh, they gave us a package of, uh, requests as well formally. And so, then we'll be going through those. And then we continue to get proposals from people. So, the work group will then circle back with the proposals that have come in and continue to bring things forward to you. But we're, just so you know, we're, uh, headed to council requests next and administration requests. But today, we have a mix of administration and council requests of what I would call kind of ARPA infrastructure. So, there, there are things that will help us be more effective and efficient and faster about getting the ARPA dollars out the door. And so, Matt Boston, uh, sent a memo to you, and the highlights of the items are, one, uh, the finance department in the administration needs additional help, professional help. And so, we got a proposal for forty hours a week for them for the next three years of a, a pretty high-level professional person to work on that. Um, similarly, we have a proposal for the, uh, part-time, uh, temp seasonals that we have in, uh, council that are working on community engagement and coordinating the council side of things. Um, that's, uh, Joy and Mackenzie have been filling that. So, we have a proposal for that for the next three years. And then we have an outside vendor, uh, accounting firm, uh, to help us with eligibility and compliance work. So, we found ourselves sometimes, uh, either not sure about what projects might be eligible for ARPA, or maybe even had a disagreement between the administration and the council. And so, we'll have these folks on call and they'll, uh, guide us. And, you know, then they're professional, they're putting their professional reputation on the line. So, if, in the very unlikely event that somehow we got an audit finding and had to pay some money back, they would have some responsibility, uh, for that, assuming we consulted with them about it. And then the fourth thing is a, a very innovative idea that came forward, um, and that is to have some assistance to really reach communities that, um, have obstacles to accessing government funds and benefits. And so, we came up with the idea of contracting with a nonprofit, uh, whoever would respond to an RFP, to set up a navigator system to reach all different communities. And so, they would have employees, uh, on-call, uh, to assist, and I'm just gonna use an example, uh, someone from the Marshallese community who really knows their main institutions and where they gather and things like that. So, that whatever we're doing, whether it's housing, childcare, business support, uh, they would help get the word out for that. And so, this, um, proposal for three years is to, um, set that up and act, operationalize that. Um, and, uh, it would include help with translation, um, consulting with other nonprofits, small nonprofits that might not have the bandwidth to be a full-on, uh, RFP responder, or help with technical expertise on RFPs. So, those are the four things. And I'm gonna just toss it back to the group and kind of get your temperature on any one of, any one or more of those four things. If you like it, don't like it, have a question, or want something different. So, Councilmember Stratton.
Just a quick question. So, how would those, um, employees, those additional employees to help with this process and finance and, um, with the committee, how would those be hired?
Yeah, so the administration would hire their, uh, finance person. And if your question is whether that is a civil service or a project employee, I'm not sure. They haven't told us what they want. This would just be putting the money aside for it. So.
Right. I just wanted to know if there's a process, are, are we just reaching out, picking people we know to, for these positions?
Oh.
Or do we know how that's gonna work?
Yeah. Well, so for the council ones, we already have two people.
Right.
You know, Joy and Mackenzie. For the administration, my sense was that they were gonna have a formal hiring, recruiting process.
Okay.
That's my sense.
I, I can chime in just a, a bit here. So.
Sure.
This is Matt Boston. Um, the, so the, the administration is looking for, um, really compliance support on this. So, with, with federal spend, spending comes a, um, a, a long list of rules and regulations that need to be abided by, especially in the reporting of it. Um, and then when we're talking about recipients and sub-receipients, um, really there's, there's a heavy degree of monitoring that's gonna have to occur to outside organizations and a bit of hand-holding as well, depending on the organizations that are involved. So, um, as it relates to how they're going to, um, hire these people, I think they're still kind of exploring that. They just, they, they need the ability to get the help so that when we do spend, um, we have the ability to maintain the regulations that are set forth by the U.S. Department of Treasury on the reporting piece. Because if we, if we can't report and we don't meet those deadlines, then we are in trouble and, and could hit a, um, some sort of penalty. So, that, that's, that's what this is for.
And I guess my main point is, I, I just wanna make sure that we don't slow this down anymore than it has to be and bring people on that don't quite know what they're doing. So, I guess I could have asked that in an easier way, but thank you. That makes, that makes sense that we really have to have people that know what they're doing.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, uh, didn't we approve, um, some of these expenditures, like a few months back? Or at least, I know we had a conversation around that Tanya had brought forward needing additional administrative support and whatnot. Did, did we not approve that a few months back? And how is this different from that?
We, we did not approve it a few months back.
Okay.
Um, she, yeah. So, this is, yeah, this is us approved, this is us, you know, we're not voting today, but this is, uh, indicating support for it so that we can then bring it forward as a specific SBO type of item.
And, and the, the positions or the, the idea behind the strategy here, that's been kind of jointly worked out between the council and, and the administration? In other words, the finance, like, positions are, are being requested by Tanya, et cetera?
Yes, yes.
Okay, very good.
Yeah. I wanna be clear to say, I, I'm not saying that they've endorsed all of these things exactly the way they're written, but yes, it's her request to get the finance position. So, yeah. Council President. Councilmember Wilkerson.
Yeah, I just wanna weigh in on the equity navigator services, how important those are when we're, when we've been doing our outreach to the community. Uh, that kept coming up. And in these ARPA funds, there's very specific language, uh, to go to impacted communities. So, we felt it was on us to go the extra mile to make sure we get the outreach to them and be as supportive as we can be in those resources.
Thank you. Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, just to piggyback on that. So, I, I guess the only thing I just wanna be sure for is, you know, so one of the requests I put in the, my list of ARP, um, uh, concepts was some additional dollars specifically for translation or translation services, et cetera. And, and so this position would be, you know, a temporary kind of two- or three-year position, right? So, I just wanna make sure that in creating this, we're not sort of doing this in lieu of funding translation and then we never do that. So, I just wanna make sure that, that, that we're still headed towards making sure that we are putting some needed funds in place for translation services.
Yeah. And just to, so part of the thing is this navigator service idea is pretty innovative. And the idea is we would do an RFP to an organization and they would help structure that. But we would include translation as part of the, the piece. Um, and in some ways, this might be a down payment on all of those things, equity, navigators, translation. Um, I'm imagining that for some of the larger, um, um, ARPA projects, we might put in specific requirements that they have to get translation services or navigator services. And then they could contract with this organization to do it. So, we just put it right in. So, I'm thinking of the small business support, for example. That might be one where we're, we're just gonna put right in there. You have to spend, um, money to, if you're gonna be putting out, let's just say there's a nonprofit that says we're gonna be doing your grant, grant allocation to small businesses. We would say, you need to spend some money on your outreach thing. However, we have this organization that's set up this whole navigation translation thing, you know, if you can go with them. So, they don't have, so each organization doesn't have to reinvent the wheel and pay the administrative cost to come up with that. They can go straight to this organization. So, to answer your actual question, this, yeah.
And that would make sense.
This is not in lieu of that.
Yeah.
This is, hopefully, will capture that.
Okay, that's great. Cause I, I know there's a conversation around whether it's assistance, making sure that we have that, you know, those documents translated. And I, I know we even had, there was a situation where we needed something and translated in the Middle Eastern and there was no funding for it. So, I, I just did it out of my travel fund. But I just think it's important that we have something systemically set up that will accomplish this, so it's not a piecemeal down the road.
Yeah, yeah. That, that is the hope of this. So, yeah. But details yet to come. Um, hopefully, we'll get some creative proposals and that'll help us with that. Other council members, any thing they wanna say about any of these four? All right, then I'll ask it this way. Does anyone have any objection to us advancing this towards, uh, the administration and where appropriate RFPs? Right, all right. That's done. Then we're to budget. And again, we've been, as I kind of explained in the, you should have gotten the memo on this as part of the notice, hopefully you read it, the, that we, you know, been on a long journey, lots more interaction with the administration this year than ever before. We had those three long sessions on, um, budget workshops, I think we called them. And we had a chance to give verbal feedback and then we gave written feedback. And then we got the next version of it. And then we, um, started working as a budget work group to figure out what And then we, um, started working as a budget work group to figure out what things that had council brought up in the workshops that weren't in it. So we've been asking Tim Donovan and Matt Boston to put together a memo and it's just been growing each week. So this is our third session. We've added additional things. But along the way, we've also been meeting with the mayor when she was available and her senior staff, um, to go over, uh, these things and get feedback on things that they liked or didn't like. And so we've continued to adjust the memo each week to take that into account. And there were, I would say the biggest example of changes is that we had several positions that had been vacant for a long time, didn't seem like the administration was interested in them. And when we met with them, they explained, no, no, we, we actually are interested and we're actually recruiting now. So we just got information, uh, back about things. So we've adjusted it. And there are other ones that they said, yep, you're right, we're not interested in that. So, um, I don't want to leave the impression that this is a, an agreed document at all because it's not. But it is informed by those meetings and we're going to continue hopefully to meet right up until Monday, uh, and, and exchange information.
Hey, Brian?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, just a technical question. I can't see everybody, but is the mayor on this? Is she in this meeting, the mayor or Mr. Perkins?
No, I, the mayor's not, Mr. Perkins said he would be interested in attending it if we, I didn't think that we were going to have time to really go into full discretion with him. I am, I am meeting with the two of them later today.
Oh, okay. All right. Thanks.
And, yes. Councilmember Kinnear and then Kepka.
A couple of weeks ago, the three of us requested, because there was some discussion lead prefaces, there was some discussion around funding for some of the positions the mayor wanted in the mayor's office. And we did ask and they did agree, um, we asked for job descriptions for some of the positions they wanted, such as a deputy administrator, because we didn't know what they were intending. And we did ask for job descriptions of some of the other positions in that office. Do you know if we received those?
I don't believe we, well, I haven't received. I don't believe we've received them to date.
Okay.
Um, but again, I have this meeting at 2:00, so I'm imagining there will be further pitch for that. So maybe that will come. And if it does, I'll certainly share it out. Councilmember Kepka.
Yeah, uh, two, so two questions. Uh, I guess first is, I don't really know anything about the, uh, and I haven't connected with Chief Mydl on it, but I'm not sure what the Technical Assistance Response Unit Director is or does. Uh, I see it's being cut. And so I'm just curious about that. Is that a position that's just unfilled or has it been requested to be removed? And then second, are we, I guess is the, is the idea for the OCR, the Office of Rights, is the idea that that's going to be a division and not a department? Because I see the, the salary for the director is in line with a division director and not a department head. And so I'm kind of curious is the idea, because, and I'm just thinking about in terms of responsibility, if the pay is the same as, as say our Community and Economic Development Division Director, who's managing several departments and a lot of people, is that, does that make sense in terms of the pay? And so I'm just trying to get a sense of, is that going to be a division or a department?
Yeah, so, no, it was envisioned as a department, not a division. Um, I, in the first draft, I had it reporting to Steve McDonald in Community and Economic Development. And then I had a request from, was to make it report directly to the city administrator. So that's how it looks right now. Um, the money, the budget authority is not saying that that's what people are getting paid or their benefits. It's just setting out that authority. That, all of that, of what the job descriptions are, how much they get paid, what salary, that will be determined. That, so this doesn't determine that, it just sets aside. So I agree with you those.
Okay.
I mean, I agree with your analysis that it's not a division, it's a department. Um, the challenge, and I'm waiting to hear back from Mr. Perkins on it. He was meeting either yesterday or today with, um, Mr. Haynes and some community members. I think they're still working out exactly how they want it to, to be. And I basically told them, let us know. Uh, but it's definitely in my mind, it's a department, not a division.
Okay. That's helpful.
Oh, your other question, actually, I'm glad you mentioned that, the police one. Can you, can somebody tell me where that is on this memo? I'm not sure.
Bottom of page two.
Okay. Top of page. Okay. Yeah, that's a good, so I think that's up for discussion. We, um, we had a meeting with administration on Tuesday and I believe this was in the memo, but I'm not sure. And we didn't get any feedback at that meeting, but since then I got a long email from Eric Finch about it, making a pitch for that. And I told him that based on what he explained to me, just, I mean, this is literally last night he sent it, so I haven't, that we should still, we should talk about it more.
Okay.
It's, um, but I need to talk to Matt Boston a little more about it. Um, but yeah, so that is definitely still in play. He made a compelling case to me about it, but I'm just, I read it this morning and sent it back to him and said we should talk some more. So, yeah, I, I agree that needs to be discussed further.
Okay.
Other.
I apologize there. Uh, and what, what was the question that we were asking? I'm sorry about that, Councilperson.
On, under police, one of the, oh, I see what it is. So they're proposing a new position. It's not an existing position, um, for Technical Assistance Response Unit Director in the Police Department. And, um, and we didn't, we didn't propose adding, I mean, we had, there were 50 new positions and so it was mostly probably a budget issue, but, um, uh, that was the question. And according to Mr. Finch, he has been working for a few years to try to get this position in place to really, uh, supervise several people in police on being more tech sa, I'm going to use my lay language, tech savvy basically, and, and integrate and do more planning on that. And so he was saying, hey, we're working on this. So, but that's probably why it was out, was that nobody had really made a case for it yet until Mr. Finch, again, made a case for it to me. And I'll, I'll send that along to folks.
I think, uh, I mean, obviously prior, we probably should go to uniformed officers, but I think if this position is able to, you know, strategize using data and just help with some smarter, smarter policing, then it's probably worthwhile, so.
Yep. Yep. All right. Thanks. And again, that's why we're putting it in a memo, both for the administration to talk to us and for council members. That's the thing, rather than suddenly on Monday night, you're trying to work your way through it, so.
And, and I, I believe that, that the concern, or one of the concerns that may have been, um, brought up when talking about, uh, this position specifically is that it was, um, supported through the Criminal Justice Fund. And while we do have, um, a bit of flexibility in, in the, the, the spend that we can have within the Criminal Justice Fund, I think, um, when we're, when we're talking about expenditures that are outside of the typical of what we have been spending in the past, we're trying to focus that on one-time expenditures as much as possible. Um, and embedding a, an ongoing position is, is something that I think that the council kind of wanted to steer, steer away from, uh, when it comes to this Criminal Justice Fund. Um, so that, that was where this, uh, was, was brought up.
Yeah. And Councilmember Kinnear.
Excuse me. Is this something that could be funded with public safety levy money?
Yes. It could.
So this is, yes. Sorry to interrupt.
No, no, I was just going to say it could, but there are other things they want to fund with public safety levy money as well. But I'll let, that's probably what Matt's going to say. Go ahead.
Yes, uh, so the public safety levy money was for, um, was intended for a specific amount of, of employees that were, um, put forth, uh, to a vote a, a few years ago. Um, and if we, while, while the funding remains pretty level year over year, um, if we add more and more positions to it, um, we, we then have to consider, okay, are we taking away other positions in this? Um, because there is a set limit of what goes into that every year because it is, it's based on a percentage, obviously. So that's the question that we have to have if we were to consider the, this to be funded through public safety levy.
So it's my recollection that, um, when we were campaigning for this, because Ben Stuckert and I did do that, there were 20 new officer positions assigned to the levy and then there were some technical positions as well. So I just think we should double check to make sure that those technical, that this wouldn't come under that, that, um, technical, um, position piece.
And the thing is, when we did the levy, the levy wasn't specific to how many fire, how many police, how much criminal justice, um, improvement. Uh, but we did, at the time, the police chief and the fire chief each gave us a list of what they would do if they had money. They haven't, they haven't done it actually, either of them. So, and it's been a couple of years and conditions change. My only thing about, I would kind of like the public safety levy myself. It seems a better fit than the Criminal Justice Assistance Fund, but, um, but I would, again, we, we need to talk to Tim and Matt a little bit about it. In terms of the way the budget is set up right now, I think it kind of assumes that the police chief will get around to hiring some of these other positions that he originally designated but have been vacant for the last few years. And so it, it may not matter that much in the budget to do it that way, but we'll just have to check on it, so. Good, great, great catch. Other comments on this? All right. So we will dive into this position and I'm so glad, Michael, that you called out Technical Assistance Response Unit Director because the email I got from Eric, he called it the Taro Director and I had no idea what the Tarot Director was. I said, hi, what are you talking about? Uh, so I think we understand what's going on. And we'll, again, fine tune. If you have other budget issues or questions ahead of Monday, we are going to, uh, uh, pass a budget. And the way we're, again, doing it is almost exactly what we did last year is we have a resolution with a memo and a spreadsheet that goes with it. And then that'll, that'll sort of be the budget proposed by the mayor and then the changes that we make via this memo and then the spreadsheet will make it crystal clear how it is. Um, and then that will get passed Monday night. Uh, Councilmember Stratton.
Just one more question on the discussion you're having with Eric regarding the question from Councilmember Kepka. Do we have a job description for that? Something to look at?
I don't know, but I'll add that to my list. Yeah.
That, that might help.
Yep. Yep. Councilmember Mum.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, um, Matt Boston or Tim Donovan, um, where our fire station money is sitting so we know where it is for sure this year for the study, for the joint study with District 8.
Okay. Um, all right. Tim or Matt, are you there to? Tim's watching. I don't know if he's on the line.
They can get to me outside of this. I just want to bring it up again.
Okay. Great. And then also, um, we did confirm that there's money for the COPS program to do that victim advocate. That's in, that's in there. It's not, it's not in this memo, but it's, it's in the budget already essentially.
In the, the next two years, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Well, technically, just to be, for the next year budget, it's there. And then we would have to add it the following year.
On behalf of the COPS, thank you.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else on budget? All right. Very efficient, everybody. And again, if you have any other concerns about it, reach out to Matt. He's, uh, traveling a little bit right today, but he is available, uh, still, uh, today and tomorrow during certain hours. Uh, so just shoot him an email if you have a question. All right. Thanks, everybody.
Just real quick, I want to say a big shout out to Matt. This is his first year going through a budget. He's great. Tim Donovan, thank you for being our angel. And as a former, former city budget director, um, our council is in good hands with both of these gentlemen.
Great. Thanks, everybody. Have a great weekend. We're adjourned.